To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, before we get started here, first of all, welcome everybody, but before we do get started, we do have a window of opportunity here for anything that's not on the agenda that if somebody wants to bring it up. I'm gonna be first tonight, if you don't mind. First of all, I want, and I'm glad Mr. Chester just walked through the door, I want to say happy birthday to Scott County on Saturday, the ones that couldn't be there. We had kickoff on February the first for the 200th birthday of Scott County. And I want to say congratulations to Mr. Chester, he's done a wonderful job putting that together. I think it was a very good, very good program. And I'd also like to say that, I'd like to read this if I may, this was given to us by the General, Indiana General Assembly, and it says, "Be as hereby known and proclaimed that whereas Scott County's history began in 1781, when General George Rogers Clark remitted the land that would later become a part of Scott County to soldiers in payment for their service to the Revolutionary War. Whereas in 1810, historic Lexington, Indiana, was established as the first town in the newly settled region. And whereas Scott County was formed as a new county on February the first, 1820, from sections of the surrounding counties of Clark, Jefferson, Jennings, Jackson, and Washington. Whereas Scott County established Lexington has its first county seat until it was moved to Scottsburg in 1874, a position that is held since that time. And whereas Scott County's beautiful history is also accompanied by substantial growth and prosperity, as evidenced by the routing of Interstate 65 through the area. And whereas Scott County's commissioners, all of the mayors in the county and all of its elected officials, both past, present, and future, are recognized and honored for their service to their communities. Therefore, Scott County is celebrated today for its bicentennial anniversary with best wishes and hope for prosperity in the years to come." And this was from Chris Garken, Indiana State Senator in District 45, and Dr. Terry Gooden, Indiana State Representative, House District 66. And this will hang in the commissary's room here, and we'll certainly thank them and appreciate that very much. There will be lots of things throughout this year that's going to take place, that will kick off, so throughout the year, there will be celebrations the whole year through. And again, I want to say thank you and congratulations on a job well done. And Mike at the end of it had the information there, but it was very interesting, a lot of things that I did not know about Scott County and some of the people that's from Scott County and the ties to what they have done. And we've had people in this community, in this county, that has done some mighty, mighty big stuff, and it's very, very important. Anyway, we thank all of you for coming. Yes, sir.
Just for information, this is probably the only time, the least place that I know of, we've ever had a senator representing both of the eight boards of Scott County. That's unusual.
That is true.
Using the other county around, so they get breaks, give us their influence.
That is true, yeah, I agree 100%. All right, with that being, oh, one other thing, I do want to take the time to acknowledge here, and a lot of these people are going to know him, Albert Thalmar has retired, I think they had a little celebration for him yesterday from the hospital board. And I want to take the opportunity from this board and wish him well in his retirement. But he was first elected to the hospital board, I believe, in the 70s?
1970.
1970. So he spent 50 years.
50 years and a few months.
And on the hospital board, and I think that's, I know nobody else that's served in a position that long. So if you see Albert Thalmar out, wish him well and congratulate. With that being said, anybody else here that's got anything they'd like to bring up or acknowledge? I'd say we will not act on it, on, if it's not on the agenda, but now's the time, a window of opportunity for you to comment, ask questions, or anything that you'd like. Sir?
Bob, just a quick update, we are expecting proclamations to arrive, official proclamations from the governor of the state of Indiana. We also are expecting letters from the White House, both President Donald Trump as well as Mike Pence.
Thank you.
So as soon as they, as soon as they arrive, we'll make sure that they are on display for promiscuity.
And again, this is the 200th year, and it's very interesting. I had the opportunity to read the, just inserts of the first county commissioner meeting that was held. We have a book here that's absolutely phenomenal, it's all handwritten, it's two, again, 200 years old, but there was five, I believe I'm right, five people that was appointed, how Scott County was kind of about, five people was appointed by the General Assembly, they were called commissioners for the General Assembly. At that point, they come down and helped get Scott County formed, and then three commissioners was appointed, I think at that time, to run the county. And the first item on the agenda was to divide Scott County into townships. And the first three townships were the Spahn Township, Lexington Township, and Jennings Township. And of course, they divided again after that, but that was the first, that was the first three townships. It's very interesting. One of the things that, and I'll let you go here, one of the things that I'll tell you about this book is amazing to me, and when I first looked at it, was the penmanship of these, I mean, these people, I cannot understand, most of them was using a quill pen back then, but their penmanship, if you look at it, it looks like the signatures of John Hancock and people of that, that might have signed the Declaration of Independence, and the penmanship was absolutely immaculate, so go ahead.
No, I was just gonna say that the first minutes of the meeting over there, the, I think that was held in Commissioner Ward's house.
Yeah.
And that house still stands over two blocks behind the fire department, people are living in it now. So their first courthouse in Scott County.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That, that is, that is. All right, with nobody jumping up and hollering or screaming that they won't say something, we'll move right into the agenda, how's that? And first up on the agenda this evening is the Citizens for the Second Amendment Sanctuary, and we have somebody that's going to speak on that behalf. If you would, come up and just give us your name, how to say.
And my name's Randy Julian.
Randy?
Randy, how are you?
I'm good, you're good. All right, so basically what this is about, if you're unfamiliar with it, is if the Indiana State House passes any law that is not constitutional, then we, Scott County, have the right to say that's unconstitutional to the federal constitution, and we don't have to follow it. All right? With that said, I've got 2012 signed petition from Scott County, everybody here from Scott County, that are interested in this thing, and this thing has, to give you some idea or background about it, we was gonna take a lot of our time to get petitions, but it kind of took off fashion we expected to, and this has happened in a matter of two weeks. And this is not going door-to-door people, this is people coming to us to sign this. We have, as far as I know, nobody has went door-to-door. So I'm sure if we did, we could get more. But anyway, with that being said, we've got a little presentation on, oh, and by the way, we're not, right now, or doesn't that the laws of the state of Indiana are replying? The laws that we got are fine. But what we are wanting to do is to keep them from creating any more laws. But we feel like, you know, the laws have or are not, I mean, it's, it doesn't need to get like Virginia or anything else, you know? And, you know, I know some people think maybe it can happen here, but Greg Taylor just tried to pass some of that stuff in the, in the House. And, you know, but with that going on in Virginia, I think it made a lot of people mad. So, but anyway, with that being said, if you look at our first founding document, it says, "We hold these truths to be self-evident." It doesn't say this ideology, this philosophy, or that we hold this political platform. It's very clear what this means, all right? So nothing more to be said about that. It goes on to say that we all are created equal, and that means equality before law, not equality of outcome, but equality of opportunity. That we are endowed by our Creator with certain inalienable rights, which are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. All right, so why is this important? Because we are the only country that says God has given each one of us personally rights that make us sovereign. All right? Each person's sovereign, meaning we, the people, loan the power to the government. All right? It's, it's not the other way around. That's why the Constitution begins with "we, the people of the United States." It doesn't say "we, the lawyers," "we, the bureaucrats," or "we, the politicians," but "we, the people." When we look at the Bill of Rights, it begins with the Second Amendment, it starts out in a very interesting way. It talks about the inherent right to bear arms. It doesn't say the Constitution gives you the right, it says the right will not be abridged, which implies that the founding fathers, who wrote the Constitution, believed that the right to bear arms comes from our Creator, and it wasn't alienated. It wasn't granted by the government. Now, our founding fathers knew, I'm sorry, now our founding fathers knew the government and what big government could do. All right? They lived it, which is why they, they had the insight to be able to write the Bill of Rights and the Constitution. But you know, that's why it stands so good, you know, 240 years later, it still, still works. But really, we don't need to look any further back than 80 years, right? With Hitler in World War II, first he started off, he tucking, taking all their ways to fight. Then he starts, then he starts annihilating the Jewish race. So today, we stand before you guys as equal Americans, and we ask that you stand with us to honor the oath that you took to defend the U.S. Constitution, which is the supreme law of the land, above the Indiana Constitution, or any law that would conflict with the U.S. Constitution. Sincerely, we, the people.
Do you have, and I've seen a copy of what you've got, do you have copies for?
We emailed them to you guys a few days ago.
I didn't know, I didn't know.
Yeah, I didn't have, I don't know if I had the correct address, email address. I did, you, John.
Okay. Yeah, I have, I have not seen.
No, no, emergency, we're missing.
Yeah. You have it? Yeah. Copy? Yeah. Okay, thank you. You say you got?
I've got one, I've got one by media.
Okay, okay. Yeah, I did not see one, I wanted Mr. Houston to help me out, or anything like that.
And as of right now, just to give you a little background, there's not a county in Indiana that this has not started yet. There are several counties that have passed it, there's two counties that have denied it, and they're fighting with lawyers now about it. So it's not just our county. I mean, it's a pretty fair shake that everybody feels the same way.
And I, and again, I do not know what this says altogether, but I will say that I, like everybody else, have heard things from, on about it. In Indiana, and correct me if I am wrong, is, it has been, I think, signed by sheriffs? Is that correct?
No.
Is there any, as the last I have heard, in Indiana?
Oh, yes, yes, I'm sorry, you're talking about the ones that other ones going around?
Yes, but as far as any board of county commissioners have, has, I don't think any has signed one yet, in the state of Indiana.
Four of them.
Four, that's what four counties did that?
There's a new one today, I'm unsure of it, but Switzerland County, Jennings County, and Franklin County. Jennings County started with the sheriff, and then the commissioners joined in.
Did they? Okay, okay. What, Cass County? Cass, Switzerland, and what?
Franklin.
Cass County? Okay.
Just real quick, I'm, at this point, about whether or not we can tell the state House that we're not going to follow the constitutional law.
Okay.
An example of that, right now, is going on in Marion County, where the prosecutor has told, and I'm sure you've probably heard of this, where the prosecutor has told the state that he is not going no longer prosecute for marijuana, all right? Because he's a hired official for the people. And right now, the state, there's nothing they can do about it, they're not happy about it, but they know they can't do nothing about it. That doesn't wane too far from what we're asking right here.
So technically, you're just asking for an ordinance to represent the Constitution?
To represent the Constitution and no more gun laws. Specifically, I mean, it's not already in place.
But just the federal Constitution?
We're going to follow the federal Constitution.
I'll look at it, let me look at it. What would be the answer for, what would be your answer is, if, if a commissioner said to you, "I've taken an oath," or the sheriff, or Tammy, or anybody else, "I've already taken an oath that says I will follow the Constitution of the United States, and also taken an oath to follow the Constitution of the state of Indiana," how do you respond to that?
That's exactly what this is about. This is about if Indiana has a conflict in law that is not followed by the federal, then it's null and void.
No future in the Supreme?
The supreme law of the land is the Constitution.
I understand that.
Not Indiana's Constitution.
I was just asking you.
Yeah, I mean, that's how we feel. The supreme law of the land is the Constitution, not Indiana's Constitution.
Okay.
So if they pass a law, say, "Don't turn around magazines," or nothing over, turn around magazines, okay? That's really, and this is kind of ridiculous, I mean, so if somebody goes into Walmart, they're gonna kill a bunch of people, so you're gonna make them carry 50, turn around magazines. You see what I'm saying? It's ridiculous. We're just tired of hearing about our guns being on the table, because in our Constitution, they're not on the table. No, you're right.
Here, go ahead.
I think, I think everybody's in agreement, we've all been sitting here watching, all across the nation, many states, and it's following state by state to state, the same people that have promised and took an oath to defend the Constitution are violating it by passing laws and bills such as in Virginia, because we do have the right to have and bear arms. It doesn't say we can't have so many, what type, or anything. And they keep violating, and keep pushing, and keep pushing, and we're all seeing our Constitution being ripped apart across the country. And what I think what we're all looking for is a commitment from you guys to represent us, to say that this is a constitutional county. Start at the county, go for the state, go from the state, for the country. Well, we have to start fighting and defending.
I agree. I, I agree with you on what you're saying there, I wonder, I have those up to this. Again, I, we will, Mr. Houston, look this over, and we did take it, we did take those, and I want to make sure that we are, the legalities and ramifications of all of it. But I will tell you this, there's probably not anybody in this room that is any but more about guns than I am, I've been a hunter all my life. I own, I own several guns, I'm somewhat like you, I've been a hunter all my life, but again, there is things that we are bound by, and I just want to make sure on my part that we're doing something that we're, that we can do, that's what I'm thinking. So, you know, I think, again, getting this and having our legal counsel look at it, I think would be the best thing, that's my opinion, I guess, or if you think, that's just what I, what I feel.
I feel the same way.
Everything's, comes back to be up and up, I'm, I'm doing this, I gotta do what I'm doing.
I feel the same way, I mean, I have to leave mine in the car to walk in here, so I got, I got hunting guns, and probably some that are hunting guns, but, but like I said, I'm, I don't like somebody changing the rules in the middle of the game, so.
I think what Bob said, and Mr. Houston, I believe will look at it, make sure the stuff's right, and actually, I may reach out to the other three or four counties that you said have already done it, and see what, what kind of process they went through and, and ramifications they had, pro and con, so.
One, one question more that I would ask, and I don't, I just kind of did a little research on it, and, but was this, was this introduced into state legislation and got turned down?
No.
It was not, I see, I wondered why it may not be turned, why it wouldn't become even a sanctuary state.
Love it, love the word. That's what we're asking for.
I wonder if it's working, I wonder if it's working.
Every county is working toward that, right?
Okay. I had, this gentleman right here.
Yeah, I just wanted to stress that, you know, we're not scared, we're not worried about them coming to take our hunting guns, you know, we don't want to limit it on our capacity to protect ourselves. Now, that's what a big, lot of this is to deal with, is personal protection, you know, to have what we have now, we don't want that taken away, you know?
All right, yes, sir.
We understand that you have taken an oath to stand behind the Constitution of the United States of America, and that you've also taken an oath to stand behind the Constitution of the state of Indiana. What we are saying, and what we're trying to get, get through, is that at some points, they come in contradiction with each other. There's been bills that have been tried to be passed in Indiana, and they've been shut down luckily, to try to hinder our round capacity, you know, assault weapons, things like this. And we know that it's been stopped up to this point, but at some point, it may not be stopped. And we feel that those laws are unconstitutional on the federal level. When it comes to the state level, if that becomes some sort of state law, we believe that will be in contradiction with the federal level, and all we're asking you to do is to stand behind the Constitution of the United States of America before you stand behind the Constitution of the state of Indiana. So we're not trying to cause a conflict between the two oaths, but at some point, there are contradictions, and we're asking you to take a side with the Constitution of the United States over the Constitution of the state of Indiana, if that ever happens.
Like I say, Mr. Houston, I have a lot of county awards to have, I should look them up. I'll take one or two more here, Mountain, you have your own.
Hi, I'm Diane Holland, I am county coordinator for the Indiana Citizens Defense League, which is a statewide group, each county, we're about 35, 40 counties strong right now. They are a support group for the Second Amendment groups. They have pro bono attorneys that are assisting with this. They, Randy has a copy of the sheriff's decree from Jennings County that was worked on through the state as well as with the sheriff, their local sheriff. This group, and not just this group, all the counties have the support of this Citizens Defense League through the state, and those attorneys are going to be working to help get this passed per county, so that a vision of the state will pass as a state sanctuary. But this group is not alone, they have state support.
Sheriff, anything on your part?
I, I'd already gave a statement, actually, that I'm a supporter of the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the state of Indiana, and in that saying that we live by the rule of law, not by the rule of force, and that I would be against any laws that would be infringing on the rights of the citizens of Scott County. I've not seen any, like, official document, but I do know that I came from a sheriff's school last week, that told me that some of the documents that had been signed across the state were not legal, they just, you sure I'm coming from? So I don't know, because I've not seen, you sure I'm coming from there? Because here's the reason why, is this, I don't need to sign a document like that because I believe in the, I'm a strict constitutionalist. If I believe in the Constitution of the United States, I'm a force in the Constitution of the United States, that's all I need to know. Because I believe in all the amendments, not just the Second Amendment. I'm talking about all the amendments to the United States Constitution. So, well, I'm just saying, I don't know what that is, you know what I'm saying, the thing is, I, I'm a supporter of the Second Amendment and the, and the Constitution of the United States, and I put that, I was a strict constitutionalist. What that means, you know what I'm saying? I don't know, because I've not seen, because I think there's about 50 of these things floating around that's different.
Yeah.
I don't think there's all, just one less, you know, somebody, so I don't know that, maybe some in the group here can tell me that, I don't know. Are they all the same?
They're all the same.
They're same?
They're all the same, and downloaded from the owners of America.
Each county's drawn up different documents that have been signed.
Well, and I'm the same thing, I, because I consider Bob Houston to be a constitutional expert, so if he comes up with something that's, you know what I'm saying? Then I'm more happy to sign on with you guys. You sure I'm coming from? I have no problem with that, yeah, absolutely. Because I'm a strict constitutionalist.
And I'll be honest, I don't think any more of us would be doing our job if we'd done it any way different than what we're telling here. And I think we owe it to people of Scott County to believe in what's best and what's right, and we're certainly, like I say, let Mr. Houston look this over, and again, I'm, I'm Jerry on this, I certainly, I took an oath, you uphold the Constitution, I'll do that, if it's something that, and again, the federal precedes state, we know that, that I am, I am bound by, by oath, it's the same as we all are. And so we'll certainly look at it, let him have some time to look at it, and we'll follow your lead, how's that?
I'm gonna follow you out.
I got a question, is, is there one group out here, or are there multiple groups that are, you know, fighting the same fight out here? I mean, well, I mean.
Scott County?
No, I mean, well, I mean, if I went to Switzerland County, Cass, Franklin, Jennings, I mean, am I gonna hear the same, is it gonna be the same format that you guys are trying to put here, or?
Yeah, we're organized on a state level, all this stems from a state level, and we've broken all vintage county groups.
Okay. So I just want to know if it's the same message, if it's not, if somebody's got a different message than somebody else has got, or?
Well, this was downloaded from the GOA website, which stands for Go, the owners of America, their attorneys have drawn this up, and most of the states, because it's not just Indiana, most of the states that have adopted and stuff, they're all, every county writes their own and puts their own spin on, so I can't answer what, I think that's the backbone of it, but if they changed it, they could.
So they could do, they could do various.
So the blanket of it is, that's what I was, it's supposed to be the same, or somebody's could be a little different?
Yeah. That's why I was asking him if it was all, like, the one single copy, or was there, like, every county?
It all comes from Gun Owners of America, where it's stemming from, and then once a county decides to pass it, they do their own.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to, yeah. Now, as far as our county goes, that's the only one that I know of.
That's around.
I'm not sure there's a road agent up here or nothing, but.
Yeah, but.
So, let me, and I'll, that's, I'm, gun owner of America, is that a national organization? Is that a, an organization?
Yes. You're like the NRA.
Well, I'm, you know, I'm certainly know about the NRA, and I'm a member of that, but I guess I never heard of the gun or NRA until this time, so.
The Gun Owners of America is one who, I do believe, they're going to do the rally in the Virginia Capitol, I think they were behind that, I think they do believe.
Is that the same, are they a part of the Sportsman's Alliance?
Not sure.
You know what I'm talking about, the Sportsman's?
Yeah, there's, there's quite a few of them going around right now, organizations.
This man back here has a question.
I have a question.
Okay.
I understand following the federal laws, as far as, I like to keep my weight, keeping bare arms. But what if the consti, what if the Bill of Rights, what if that Second Amendment is changed by Congress? And by, by, I guess our senator making a, a final vote, that they'll say, "You can own these types of guns, but you can't own these types." If I have an AR, I don't want to give up the right to have that AR when I'm using it for nothing more than target practice. Same thing with a shotgun, a handgun. I don't want to give up that right. What if the federal government, now, we want to be a sanctuary county? Do we, if, if we follow the federal guidelines, do we give up that right? If they change something? I mean, we're going to follow, we're going to follow the Second Amendment, keeping bare arms. Now, if they make an amendment to that Second Amendment.
That's where, that's where you got to go elect people that are going to go how you want to.
I mean.
Because if they change the Constitution, and it's a, it's a big deal to change the Constitution. I think three-fourth, three-fourths of the Congress has to, has to pass it. But if you're going to find, what is it, sixty-seven, sixty-seven senators or to pass a law, then.
I understand it's going to be hard, but there have been amendments made.
Oh, I know, but that's where you have to.
In the last twenty years that have changed things.
The only thing you can do there is watch how you vote and vote for people that are, or vote the same way you want to vote. Because anybody, I mean, I won't say anybody can change the Constitution. It's a heavy burden to change it or to amend it or anything else, but, but it can be done.
I'm wondering, I'm wondering here, is there a way to word this so that, so as a county?
I don't think county is going to supersede the federal Constitution.
Yeah, we want to follow federal guidelines until you decide you're going to. I, I, I personally see no reason to have a hundred-round magazine. You know, the only reason for something like that, in my opinion, is, is if you are a nut, you're going to go out here and just start taking shots at people. Or in case we are invaded by another country. So, I don't see any reason for a hundred-round magazine. There's nothing you can do with a hundred-round magazine that you can't do with ten, ten-round magazines.
Why do you agree with this, what number of magazines we have?
I don't, no, no, I, I don't want to limit anything. I don't want, I don't want to limit anything. I'm just saying, I don't see any sense to have a, I, I have a nephew who's got a dumb revolution. I don't see any sense to have something like that.
I mean, you're totally off topic.
But I don't want, I don't want to, I don't want to see the federal government change something. As we accept that the federal government says here, you know, they say, "Well, for militia, right, keep your bare arms." And then twenty years from now, or two years from now, they decide to change that. I'd say, wait, keep your bare arms, except if you can't have a thirty-round magazine.
Is that, folks, let me call this back to order here.
Everybody should pack that with them. I've got one on my desk, hold on a second.
Go ahead.
Hold that up.
Thank you, guys. I don't know where I got.
This is a, he said this is the Constitution of the United States. He's carry that with him? Every single American citizen should carry these with them? I keep one on my desk.
I've got one.
So, everybody's got that. Good deal, I like that.
I've got him in the back first, and then we'll get him and you, and then we're going to wind this up. But go ahead.
I would just like to say thank you for at least, you know, agreeing to look into this. I would also ask though, is there any way we could get some sort of timeframe on a decision? Like maybe by, you know, next month or in the next week or so, that we could get a decision? Because the last thing we want is to always need to come in here to talk to you guys. I'm not saying that you would do this, but that it would just sit here and stall out for the next six months and be put on the back burner for God's sake.
I'll, I'll, the first of my turning here are.
About the first meeting of the, first meeting. About the first meeting of March.
First meeting of March.
I think fair enough.
Okay. Okay.
I just wanted to say, I think I saw glint in his eye, in Mr. Houston's eye, when we said something about a constitutional state and had it been introduced as a bill. I say we make you famous.
He's already famous. Let me, and I'm, I'm going to say one more thing here. Again, folks, we thank you for coming out again. I'm, I am telling you that I do support the Second Amendment, I support the Constitution. I'm no different from you guys, I don't want to come to, nobody wants to lose something. But I will say this. And really, I asked about a constitutional state, or a constitutional state, or a sanctuary state. Whenever you're dealing with a state and your local government, you are never going to supersede state and you're never going to supersede federal government. I'm just going to tell you that. Because what happens is, one, one way or the other, somewhere, they have, they have ways of, you don't know whether or not grant monies will be cut out. And that might be one reason we don't have a sanctuary state, is if it goes against the grain of what the federal government wants to do. I'm sure others can, they can cut grant monies out to the states, to the states, same way as the states can cut it out to local communities.
Will take up a collection.
Well, that'd be a big collection to take up, let me tell you. But Randy, we'll give you one more chance and then we're out of here.
I will say that Trump tried to do that to California and it got shut down pretty quick.
Well, I think what it is, is the federal Supreme Court, it's their job to protect our Constitution. And they have totally took their hands off of that responsibility and left it up to the states to do whatever they want and self-govern themselves. And they are letting them all over our constitutional rights. And that's what we're all afraid of here in the state of Indiana. I mean, if you've seen Virginia, if they didn't get the soft book and banning multi-magazine pass through, and as retaliation, they introduced a bill to violate the First Amendment by shutting them up. You can't criticize or threaten anybody, a politician or anything, and that's violating the First. So, if you can't get to violate the Second, violate the First. And this all scares us. We don't want to have them in here.
I was good. All right. Thank you all, and like I say, court meeting and.
I'm not even impressed with a gun.
Huge for it.
It's a trouble.
Everybody, y'all.
All right, y'all. He's already made.
You catching your hands off, that's a whole.
Good.
Sure.
Come on up.
All right. All right. We can help if we're able to. Come up.
Right. I need my health board to move to twenty-twenty. Is Mr. Ron West disagreeing to stay on the ground another four-year term?
We have a motion to reappoint Mr. Ron Webb to another four years to the health board.
Thank you.
Tell him, tell him, tell him, Mr. Houston.
The famous, the famous Houston.
This is some good news. This is the random pre-employment drug testing testing for two thousand nineteen. Broken down by month, and we have a total there, breaking down the categories. Of what we all, what we tested for, the OT or not the OT. And then at the top, some of the drug screening, which you had. This is the best, working with the audit office, the best I could do for us. Like a cost savings number, which is about, is under thirty-three hundred dollars. Two thousand nineteen, we did it all ourselves. It's a little bit, it's a little bit. Did quite a few tests.
So, back to the random, we randomize or not?
Every quarter.
That's why I see her three months.
Yeah, and so you can see like in January two thousand nineteen, we were still getting everything up and right to the D and test. And all those. Um, so that kind of touched upon my head, it's a question, is this letter that I would like you guys, that I've typed up that I would let you guys to sign on, put on your letterhead and send to the department heads. There's a little bit of an issue with the timing, so random drug testing, not notified. It's what we've been running into is we're calling department heads and so-and-so's been selected for a random drug testing, you send them over, and then it's later that afternoon, or the next day, or weeks and weeks. And it's like, I think, you know, the majority of people that are going to be selected are not going to be in the closet. But when you tell somebody you're going to send for a random drug testing, you don't see it for three days. And the department is like, oh, it's fine, but we don't.
And there are guys that were.
Yeah, they got to get remedied. It's not like you can come next weekend.
Right, so it's a little bit running into, and then like here and there, we have to push back on. You know, I can't send that person because it's a conflict, which is fine, and that's what I've. That's what I've notified here, is that if you don't notify them, like, for example, the courts, if you're in court that day and I've notified you, that's what we're going to be randomly selected for drug testing. But they're in court all day, you don't have to tell that person. Say, okay, I'm going to tell them on Thursday when we don't have court and they're going to come in. That's fine. You can't tell them on Monday because I'm sending them for Thursday because they're not coming to the rate of that. I'm just thinking.
I was thinking, I'm, I'm a federal guy, I'm thinking if you got a four, I would. That's what I was thinking.
Always, if it's, if it's, if you're sending somebody for suspicion, or somebody had been in an accident, or something like that, you have, you had the clocks on and you have so many hours to do it. And a random, because I get randoms all the time, and what happens is that you get that, the department head gets that, and then I can hold it, if I know that guy's out on the route, or I know he's working or not at work yet, I can call him when he walks in the door and go, "You need to go, and you need to go now, not two days from now. You need to go." And if he doesn't go, he's not allowed.
Right. And that was like, that's the benefit of doing it ourselves with ITI, is that we're more flexible. You don't have to call somebody in who works there and ship it to Sheriff's Department to come in and get comp time or overtime. They can just, they can just set it up for a time to come in that's convenient or as convenient.
But you don't notify the person that you.
Right, you don't notify the person.
I want to make sure, send them right out like you said, and they don't go. They have to, you know, park or in a bad accident or something, that's a part of the system. Yeah, that's what I had to do.
Once you, once you, once you tell a person that they have to go for random, it's their responsibility to go. And if they don't.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
What she wanted to say, and again, the department heads.
It's the same thing.
You need to keep. The other part of that, the whole, the third part is, I think what we were talking about is that, and I think Tammy's getting set up as a court, you need to know how to have suspicion training.
That would be an ITI thing.
Yeah, and ITI, and then Wagoner, he should have given way in on that. And if we want to have more specific supervising training, ITI would come in and do that. Wager's going to cover the broad spectrum of the department heads, and then we can get more specific level training on management.
Right, because I know Jill has federal guys, right? So, like suspicion training, very, or suspicion of your driver is much different than suspicion of just.
Because there are those two sides here. We have our voluntary random testing and we have our mandated testing.
And this is really for non-DOT, like Jill's awesome, she does it perfect. If somebody's paving that day, you know what I mean? She doesn't tell them, we'll tell them we're going to do one Tuesday. Yeah, she's crazy. It's the non-DOT where like the random part, so.
And we've been doing this basically a year. So, we're not, you know, we've been doing this basically, what, a year now? We've turned that corner, so. They're still getting used to things because they've not had to do this.
Right, yes.
They've done it four times.
I'm hearing you right, department heads aren't sending them out, we can recall, we should. Without mentioning the big one.
And obviously, like what comes from me is not going to hold as much as. And like with, I think it mentions on there, like the sample, like the go postal, UPS picks, or FedEx picks them up at four o'clock. So, we have to give somebody two hours to test. So, we send them over at three-thirty, you're assuming they're going to go, like, they're going to give us a sample immediately. But then I have to give them two hours, and then partners could be there for five-thirty, then go postal's closed. So, that's why the letter says, send them before two o'clock, so that way we have time to get the sample mailed out that day and after you make the test.
I'm okay with it, I tell you. Again, I think it needs to be done, that's my opinion. And, and really, I say this, and I've said this all along, and I certainly don't have a problem taking the drug test in there a week, anytime today. I know that Kentucky County, they've been in the news, that have, I believe, most of their highway department testing positive. And they have to leave them.
Plus the supervisor.
And, well, that's, five, five of them, that's, that's better than fifty percent.
Plus the boss.
Plus the boss that left there. And again, you know, I think it's, I think it's important that, to, if there is really to suspect, you know, the liability that county has, every time they let, we have, we have a responsibility to protect people in this county from. And I don't have a problem, I think they, they are notified, in my opinion, if somebody's in court. And I think leaving this up to the department head. Again, if you are picked randomly, I think you're going to know whether you've got an employee in court that's going to be tied up that day. I think you're exactly right, I don't think you make them aware of that until the next day when they're up on the court and when they walk in, you do exactly.
Occasionally you let.
Go get tested. Because I think at that point, I think it's.
Occasionally you have somebody being on vacation.
Yeah, yes.
You really didn't agree.
Yes, sir.
But what I would like to ask you to do is, we, I'm on first, but I haven't read all of it, but say, our department has yet. Come on, come on, I mean, I'm for that. But if somebody's not, we should appreciate it, let her know, let her let us know.
Well, and that letter, it says that if you feel like someone should be exempt from this testing, it needs to be, it needs to be before you guys and be specifically approved by you guys to be exempt.
Let me, wait. Somebody doesn't apply, you're saying we can't do anything, do we have an agreement?
No. The way I can turn right now, I think there are some department heads that are going to tell you, they are exempt. So, what we're saying is, if you think, if you think your department is exempt, let us know. Or if you think you have an employee in your department that's exempt, let us know. I can think of, I can think of three examples of that right now.
I'm, 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 and I've said four, and I, I just.
I don't know why anybody would want to do that, in my mind.
I don't either.
But there are some that would think that they're above the law, so they don't like to do any of this. Not very many, but I can think of. Well, I got an issue with him, I think, and they're exempt. And I, quite honestly, if there's, if there's, I guess if there's somebody that thinks they're exempt, then I guess write on a note and send it to me, because I don't want to know who thinks they're, they're exempt. Because I would take it directly, just like Bob, we'll go together.
I would too.
I'm not going to jail tomorrow.
All right.
Send my CVS on the way home.
I hope you have this, we need a motion to, on this.
Yeah, just four, ten minutes, get on your glasses, letterhead, and send it out to the department head. See it out for you.
You, you got it in your jacket?
What, what I thought?
You look, keep going, Ron West.
I'll, I'm taking a motion.
I'll make a.
Motion, second.
Third, second, whatever I'm getting at.
Did that motion then. Okay, did that motion then?
And put on my letterhead, and, yeah, motion, second, clean. And then, uh, you want to put that on our letterhead, then we'll sign it off.
And then I'll get, I'll get it signed, okay, that's, and I've got that say, you've got my address from, so I can transfer it.
All right, electronic medical records management system.
Yes, so we, um, by one of our, our immunization grant, we have to be billing Medicaid for childhood vaccinations by the end of June, by the time the grant ends. And so, to help that billing process, we want to do an electronic medical record system that will kind of bill half our, um, it's a six hundred and fifty dollar deposit. We get that back as long as we are up and running within six months, which we plan to be, like I said, by June. Uh, and that's a credit to our account, and then it's a service fee of four hundred dollars a month, which is taken out of the revenue we get each month from the good spending that is, uh, and based on our calculations out, even last year, if we would have billed for all the childhood vaccinations through Medicaid, it probably would have been eighteen to twenty-two thousand dollars that we would have paid. So, four hundred dollars a month, it doesn't really matter.
And you have that in your budget to cover that, correct?
Um, yeah, I have the six fifty a month, like you said, it's just accredited back to your account, so then it's ongoing, and then our revenue pays for the monthly service fees.
Okay. I want to hear a motion to allow, uh, her to enter into this electronic medical records management system.
Oh, my.
It has a Roger's name on it, um, I don't know if you want to sign it below him, as I said earlier, but it's just an electronic, so I can't... And then the, um, trash agreement, it's just up for renewal, it'll automatically renew if you guys don't do anything, or if you want to cancel it, or if you want to renew, you have sixty days to let them know if you want to cancel the deed, because I know last time we did our trash contract, we talked about, I think there was some conversation about the county taking it back over, and...
That's, uh, again, I think that's something that we do need to probably talk about on, whether or not we're going to relet the contract out on, for the trash, on the pickup sites for the county, and also the transfer station. Uh, I mean, I've been contacted by some colleagues that would like to bid on that, so that's something that probably needs to be talked about, for, 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 if we want to do that, so, let's, let's hold off on that right there for now.
Okay, yeah, I'll just continue as in, we, we want to decide a different... And then last, but not least, um, we need to schedule a date for our, to vote for the certain service program renewal. Um, we just need to do it before end of April, because it really just ended the first week of May.
And there are new, if Indiana just passed something, or the city did, or the house did?
So, yeah, so there was a, there was a revision to the current bill. As the current bill, it says that, um, on July first, twenty-twenty-one, all S S Ps will end the bill, I guess, I don't know what it's wires. Um, there was a bill in the Senate yesterday that had cropped that out, and you would have, there would be no date expiration on the bill. Uh, it was voted down, as well as some other stuff that they added in there about possession charges and things like that. Um, so, I talked to the state today, and assuming it'll probably be brought up again in the fall session, or the next session, if it's not, if nothing changes between now and July twenty-first, then basically we just go back to how things were in twenty-fifteen. So, if we wanted to do a certain service program, we would contact the governor to a public health emergency, have this special declaration that the governor did back in two thousand and fifteen, if we wanted to continue our program, if nothing, if everything stays as is with the law in twenty-twenty-one.
Could you explain what happened in Ashen County? Sort of voted down and was brought up again privately, is that correct?
Uh, I'm not like super familiar with it, but my understanding was that the commissioners voted for it, um, the commissioners approved it, but then the council didn't approve any money for it, so then it just couldn't operate because there was no funding for it. Um, and then they con, now they've contracted through a third party, Aspire, I believe it is.
The commissioners' contract?
I believe so.
I'm just trying to figure out how this third party can come in and do this.
I believe so. Aspire does a lot of HIV and, um, HIV, like healthcare services in that area, I believe. I know they, they do a lot of HIV work, so...
If this program, if I heard right, the state paid for it? No?
Well, I mean, the state provides funding for our program too. Like, there's no county dollars, you just...
But what I'm trying to see is, the county voted down, it was put in anyway privately with state money.
I think what happened was that, so, the commissioners voted to contract it out to this third party.
Yeah.
And so then all the funds went to the third party.
State funds.
Yes, which, right now, the county gets the state funds, because we're, are the county interested in it.
And now that Monroe Township, or Monroe County?
Yeah, they run theirs through, um, Indiana Recovery Alliance.
Third party.
Yeah.
But the county council couldn't stop it.
I guess not.
Maybe I'm putting you on fire, I'm trying to sort out, I've talked to the commissioners about it too.
I can, I can get, I can get more details for you, I just, that's, I just don't like the overview of it, kind of, not the specifics. I know that the commissioners voted, yes, council voted not to fund it, and then a year or till later, Aspire has taken it over.
Yeah, and it's, that, that whole process seemed odd to me, and I never quite figured it out, if you vote, the council don't vote like, money came out of the sky, sometimes.
So did they, I'm, I'm trying to understand that, I don't want to hurt too much, but did, and they say it was Madison County?
Yeah, Madison, and then like he said, and Robert.
And then they, did they, uh...
Lawrence had something.
Would they, uh...
Lawrence ended theirs.
Lawrence ended theirs.
But, uh, Lawrence County did?
Yeah, they were, two years ago, he called me.
Has, and that's what I...
Pass through, kind of like Watch Spring passes through the county. The county's an agent, and that state gives the money to the county, the county passes it through, like we did Watch Spring for that building. That could be how they're doing that in circumventing council, because there's no appropriation.
I guess my question would be on that.
The only one's been running anyway.
I guess my question on that, no matter where it's coming from, my, my first question is, is how long were they down, Madison County down?
A little, good year.
And my, my, the question I would want answered on that, if you can get to answer on it, is what did the numbers do?
Okay.
Also, I would like to know that from Lawrence County too, where they ended there, so I would be interested in, no, is, is it status quo, is it raised, or, you know, if anything like that would be helpful to me.
Yeah.
As far as I'm concerned, uh, we have to do this before May first, and, um, we'll certainly get that done before May.
I would, I, I guess my question is, um, do you want to do it on a regular meeting? Um, it usually takes a while, this discussion, it usually, I mean, I don't think we've ever been here lasting two hours talking about it. Um, if you want to do a special night, if you want to, I don't know, that's, that's my question to you guys.
Okay.
I think you would do a special night, I mean, that makes sense to me for taking that long, so I would be okay with that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm up to you guys, if you need...
I'm o, I'm okay with that, I know this, you know, and I've said this before, and I'll say it again, I, I know this is a controversial issue, but then again, uh, if you follow the numbers on this, and, and that's why you're not interested in it.
I know you like your numbers.
I just want to make sure that, uh, I know, I know the numbers for them.
Yeah, 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 for sure. I'm a numbers person too, so...
We gotta know that, so, anyway, uh, let us, we'll let you know on that.
Okay.
We might, we may just...
Should I give a Tammy maybe two or three proposed states?
Yeah, we'll give her, yeah, do that.
The state can...
Yeah.
Yes, okay.
We'll do that, and, uh, I think we're out, C D C, and I, I'm happy to do that.
Okay, yeah.
Might be good to see our U S Secretary General come down.
Yeah, he, I think his handlers kind of keep him away from Scott County, because he was so associated with us here in the beginning of his career here.
Who were the state now?
Uh, Donald Box, Christina Box. Yeah, she was here when we renewed two years ago.
Forty with the program.
Yes.
Now, now, who would his handler be?
I don't know who his handlers are, but that's just what, I'll just hope he's here, his people, his P R people.
As far as...
Yeah, yes.
I got a question.
Yes.
As far as the Narcan, uh, is that, is that coincide with the needle exchange, or is that totally separate?
Totally separate. So that grant actually, um, kind, it just came up for, like, we reapply for overdoses just recently, so it doesn't, I believe the only thing that they coincide with is you, I think the S S P law says you have to have Narcan on your facility, for the fact that if someone overdoses on your property while coming to the S S P, you have to be able to provide them Narcan, like, revive them, but I don't think the law states you have to give out Narcan, or you have to have Narcan grant, or anything like that, I think that's the only way they coincide.
Are you proud? I think that, uh, I think you were still out when I got that information, is, which to me is disturbing, that we're having upwards of twenty, twenty-five overdoses a month, and we don't know anything about it, so...
How do you, how do you, is that just because of the data that we ask when they come to the S S P, you mean, yeah?
I mean, it's your dad, I mean, you're, you're handing Narcan to somebody, and they're coming back and, and requesting more Narcan, so they've had to use it.
Right.
So, so those don't get reported to him, they don't get reported to nine-one-one, they don't get reported to anybody, so that...
I mean, they get reported to us, but I mean, we don't know who they are.
Yeah, but nobody knows who these people are.
Why, why, I guess what would be the point of knowing who overdosed?
My point is, is that...
As far as like HIPAA, privacy?
No, I don't care about HIPAA, I mean, and I don't care about knowing who that person is. What I'm saying is, is that EMS comes in here and tells us their runs down, their overdoses are down, and everybody thinks, great, our overdoses are down, but in, in your report, you're getting twenty or thirty overdoses a month, and aren't being reported anyplace. So in turn, we, we, we think that we're, our overdoses are down in the county, and technically they're not, they're just unreported. So, you know, if we're having Narcan parties where people are out there overdosing, and then somebody's standing awake and saving a person, I've heard that.
Okay. I mean, are you wanting me to share that information with EMS?
No, 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 I know, I just, I was concerned when I saw the information, that, that you're handing out so many Narcans a, a month, so many of them are coming back and saying, we used X amount of Narcan on X amount of people, and those overdoses, even though our numbers look like they're great, and the overdoses are down in the county, because EMS and nine-one-one aren't getting those calls, but they're not.
But my argument to that would be that, that's twenty-five runs that EMS, sheriff, and then didn't have to go out on to administer Narcan, which I know some people do not like to do, and that saved them, so then maybe they're out on a scene that's, you know, an emergency, a wreck on the interstate, you know what I mean? Like, you can look at it that way too, that that's twenty-five more people that were saved, and we encourage people to call nine-one-one, that's like part of our agreement when we pass something Narcan, we're not saying don't call nine-one-one, it's just, you can look at it that way too, that, that's it.
I don't look at that way.
I can look at that.
I know. All right, that's all I got.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Get a slate that you can, with yours.
Yes, I will work with Tammy.
All right, thank you. Sheriff.
Yes. I had to squeeze into that chair, man, it pushed me up there to get me out of it. Oh.
Harmless chairs.
Yeah. I just needed to lose some weight, that's what I did. Yeah, I did, I did, I did. Uh, a couple things, and, uh, we got anyone on for tomorrow is, uh, a detective. It's, uh, Bob's saying, who's saying, so, get that one first, I guess.
There's a ratification on that, uh, for vehicle swap, you know, and, uh, will I retain a motion for that?
What do you mean by vehicle swap?
This, uh...
Not, not that particular one, this is a...
That's a different one.
A recent swap that they needed to do.
It's a new car, or they...
And, and, uh, just a motion to allow.
I'll say it once in two years.
I'll make a, second one. Unanimous?
Uh, the second thing is, is, uh, an S O P can supply a contract, which, basically what that is, is this, but there are the merit handbook, and then there is a bunch of like standard operating procedures, but when I went in and I said, I need the list of standard operating procedures, I need to see what they are, everybody shrugged their shoulders and said, mm-hmm, for that, nobody had them. Uh, and that some of them are outdated, some of, it's just not been updated. Uh, we've got to bring ourselves up to twenty-two. Uh, and actually, Indiana Sheriff's Association has a, uh, deal right now with a company called Lexipol. Lexipol is the one who writes a lot of standard operating procedures and administrative stuff for state and also a lot of local agencies. We can get into an agreement to first year, they will come down, and they will create a set of standard operating procedures for us, the way we want them created. We tell them how strict, how loose, how, you know, the practice that we have. Uh, they will create those, and it's all based on federal law, state law, and, and the courts, uh, rulings. Uh, and then after the first year, they will come and do that, after the first year, there's no law to renew, so we either stick with them, or we keep the ones we got and say, ah, we don't need you anymore, okay? However, if we stick to them, and that's something we can decide if you're down, they will automatically, they give free trainings, they, they update them for free, they come down and say, there was just a court ruling that happened this on a pursuit, or whatever it is, and this is what happened, so you need to change your policies to meet this. It's actually, it's a C Y A to the max, and I seen, they charge by the number of officers you have, once you, after the first year, which we want to get free, they charge by the number of officers you have, and most of the people that were up there, so they were paying around three thousand dollars a year. Uh, that's pretty cheap, you know what I'm saying, when it comes down to knowing the latest laws, plus they give us legal updates and stuff, but that's something we talked about a year ago.
But it's free, it's free the first...
Yeah, it's free the first year, I just want to be able to enter an agreement that they will, they can come down, uh, and what I'd like to do is, is once we get this standard operating procedures done, then I'd like to sit down with my merit board, redo the merit book, merit handbook, and then we will have a merit handbook with the standard operating procedures that has been appended to the merit handbooks. That way it'll all be the one thing, or somebody comes up and says, that's like right now, if we have to go to court, we have to do something, and, and Tammy said, I need to see your standard operating, so you can just like, which one am I giving? Because we don't even know which ones are still active, which ones are still being activated. So we gave that to me, I'll, okay. And there's no, we're not obligated in the future.
Yeah. I hear a motion to allow, uh, him to enter into this contract with this, uh...
So as far as SOPs, I'm here, are they different than what the handbook would say, or?
Yeah, they could be, they could be not, even something terrible, like how to, like how to...
First, or, you know, later, you know, I don't know what we do, we got a handbook.
Yeah, it's the same sort of thing. It's, it's, it's...
EMS, EMS has...
Oyment stuff, this is...
Yeah, but EMS has their own SOPs, too, they're gonna be on, uh, on, it is a little bit different, uh, so we, uh...
Awesome.
Motion, may I say, and I'm not getting unanimous, so, yeah.
All right, and the third thing she had on there was, it's your interlocal agreement with the seat of Austin vehicles, uh, the sheriff's department gave Austin a K nine The sheriff's department gave Austin a K-nine car that cut two years ago, they're just giving it back. They've got two Crown Vics that they were going to get rid of, and they said we can have them. They're pretty damn good shape, one's only got like seventy thousand miles. So they're going to give them to us, that was with interlocal agreement that you had there.
And that was based solely on the prior interlocal agreement when the county gave it to Austin, that K-nine vehicle, a few, couple of years ago, I think. And then this is basically the same document, we just reversed it and added two more vehicles to exhibit it.
We're getting one back. Yeah, we're getting one back and they're giving us two, which are Crown Vics and we do our emergency.
Got a little note.
The price is right too.
Might not be a bad time to, to get rid of smoke and-
Yeah, absolutely, we're trying to do that.
Mayor. One condition to that call, I don't want them back when they're trash. I looked up the city mayor, I didn't know, the city mayor come in, again, the mayor of Austin, Roger Hawkins. But yes, that's, I'm dealing with this. Motion?
Motion.
Second.
I'll second.
Okay, a quick update, I wasn't able to give you my year-end stats at the first meeting, so, so busy, so. Real quickly here, the year-end stats for two thousand nineteen, sheriff's department. We've had two hundred and twenty-two drug-related arrests, probably the most ever in the county that's ever happened. Nine hundred and sixty-four total arrests, that's all crimes. That was the highest amount of arrests that's ever been made in the county. We had fourteen thousand one hundred and fifty-three calls for service. It's amazing. With eleven thousand one hundred and fifty case reports, which case reports is where you have to sit down in front of the computer and type, not just, you know, a CAD entry. Sheriff deputies, again, made more arrests this year than the other year in the office. To me even make that, what my folks have done so impressive is, is we've done that, being a lot of times five people down. We had three people in the academy, and of course, you know what I'm saying, people had to replace, it was sick, hurt, that kind of stuff. So we're looking forward, actually, to a great twenty-twenty, I think we've got, we've got a lot of stuff in store, a lot of things we're going to be doing. One thing in the jail, in the Scott County Jail, we graduated ten prisoners with GEDs, ten prisoners' welding degrees. That was a state of Indiana, first for any county jail offering a welding class here in Scott County. We had five prisoners graduate with safe food handling certifications. We've got twelve weekly classes being offered to prisoners for self-improvement, involving both the face-based and the secular style help. So we're giving those folks that's inside of the jail, giving them that opportunity. We're going to be expanding on that, or hopefully we're going to be having another welding class. We're also going to be having a, hopefully a forklift driving class, a computer CNC class, where they can learn how to do the computer stuff now at the industrial side. So we've got stuff, and we're actually working with MASP this year, hopefully we can get it out there to an American Science Park. Yeah, so we're, we're trying to work hand in hand and get that going. And I know that Bob's come over, he was just over there yesterday, I guess it was, he's seen the improvements that we're making inside the jail.
I, I, I would, I would probably be honest with you. And with using the prisoners to do this, it has, it's made a big difference, it's a magnet. You know, I thought that the solid court out there was, was-
I would put it against any solid court in the state of Indiana. Would not care for anybody to come down and say the-
I mean, it's, they've done a good job on, as I'm really proud.
Just some of the stuff we've got going on in the jail there. And I tell you what really I'm proud of is this too, those folks over at the jail volunteering like that, they want to get out, they want to help, and there's some talented people there.
Oh, yeah.
Talented, very talented people, so it's worked out well for us. Here's something too that I wanted to tell you that I'm really proud of, and it's amazing the amount of money that this involves. The Scott County Sheriff's Office reserves worked over ten thousand five hundred and one hours. That's not including the sheriff's policy, that's just the reserve force. And that equates to a tax, tax savings for, well, if we had a part-time deputy salary, that equates to two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, to a, two hundred and fifteen, two hundred and eighty. So over two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars we saved the taxpayers and provided a service by our reserves. So we're extremely proud of that too, and those guys deserve a big pat on the back. Uh, let's see. Other than that, I wanted to tell you about the jail, what we're keeping the Allen County prisoners. We have, right now, we have, we are holding fifteen Allen County prisoners for Jefferson County. That's the most that we've had, obviously, we've been holding five or six before. Last year alone, from when we started this, we brought in thirty-seven thousand five hundred and seventy-five dollars. Pretty amazing figure if you think about it, but we didn't get it started until late. So this year, we're hoping to, to really do well with that, and like I said, we've got fifteen prisoners and it's thirty-seven fifty days, so you keep that up for the whole year, and I hope we can, um-
Imagine I'm going up to-
Yeah, we're seeing a, and knock on wood, you know what I'm saying, we're seeing a decrease in the number of Scott County defendants, which is great, because that's the plan, you know what I'm saying, that's our plan. Hopefully it's telling us our plan, it's working. Other than that, I've got the commissary report down, but I'll wait till next time, because Tammy wanted to wait till next time to give that, so we're going to have to give that next time. And I actually think that's all I got. There you go. If you need anything, let me know.
We need to, Jill and Mike can straighten out on the other side. Oh, is that right? I think I need it. I can't, I'm not the only person in here talking. We had this for many times. Yeah, I know.
Turn that down back there.
Hey, we're leaving, we're going to have to do something.
Alright. Highway park update.
Last meeting, we opened annual bids, and I took them with me. And there is a printout to show you who bid. And I just would ask that you accept all bids, especially like with the fuel, we didn't put a price because they just go by the daily rate. So we try to call and find out who's cheaper that day anyway. So I would, there's also on the back page too, yeah, I would ask that you accept all bids, if you did.
I misunderstand that, that they put the price in chain here for long term.
Um, the oil and the rock, that doesn't, but the fuel does, because they base it off what the fuel rate is. And the coal mix, no, all that stuff stays the same. However, the reason, another reason I ask you to accept all, like for the coal mix and hot mix, is because if we're in that part of the county, it's cheaper for us to go to a company there as, you know, where this-
Even if it costs more money to go per ton, it's cheaper.
The gas savings.
The gas savings, when we've always talked about that, so. Yeah, here, an option to accept all the bids.
I'll make a motion.
Second, option, unanimous.
Tammy is going to talk about that in a little bit, the auction, but I did type up a list of stuff that we have. And, um, I would like to, I made a mistake, I would like to ask for a special meeting. I don't know if you got to talk to them about that, but we did meet with Matt today at Mr. Houston's office. And we're on a time schedule with the state, because you have to determine in the proposal signed from the commissioners by February twenty-fourth. And there's a lot of paperwork to that grant. So I would like to get a special meeting date for you all to decide when to go ahead with the signing of this grant.
That's probably just twenty-fourth, correct?
Yes. Twenty-fourth is a Monday, the fifteenth is a nineteen, so what we need to be looking at is next week sometime. Or maybe the seventh, is the seventeenth a Monday?
Seventeenth, definitely.
Because I think he's the one.
Two weeks.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah.
Or the seventeenth is a holiday?
You got the weekend and the fifteenth, and the weekend and the twenty-second, and we got a meeting on the nineteenth, a regular meeting on the nineteenth.
When's he back, do you know?
On Wednesday.
The next week, I think, just in the middle of the week next to-
Could you do Friday?
That's Friday the fourteenth, you do anything on that one today?
No. My husband's here, he'll do that.
He has no one. On the spot. First thing. Hope we get your camera, you said that.
What about, what about thirty?
I don't know that that gives him enough time. I gave him a lot of paperwork to do that tonight. I don't care if we run in on the Monday, and you guys don't, on the holiday, I don't care if we run in. I mean, it's going to be a fifteen-minute meeting.
I'm scared you guys will work out two of you guys, you're fine.
What about you? If we got it on sub-tape.
I'm fine.
I just made her have to come in.
Oh, yeah, that, yeah, we had to make her have to come in. But what about anything, what's our two to be anything?
That's fine.
You didn't look like that, fine. Well, we're going to be gone when I'm here.
Is that going to be you?
I'm going, I don't know.
Oh, okay, that's what you're, okay, I see what you're saying.
Because if one paper's wrong.
She's got to get it all together.
Yeah.
We need to make a decision on what we're going to do, so.
Yeah. You'll be alright with that?
For the seventeenth?
Bring her some, bring her some of that leftover candy up to get on down the time to bake there on the day.
Yeah, but you don't, what, what time is it?
Uh, I don't care, you want to do it in the morning or do it at eight, it don't matter, man.
You want to do it?
Monday's I can do it.
I, I think the morning's better, I can still get over it.
I can do it after lunch.
After lunch?
I got payroll due by eleven o'clock, so.
So would you be good to?
So the thirteenth, now I have time, but four, it's not, then it's right at time, so then the eighteenth, you're not going to wait until nine, so the seventeenth, at three o'clock?
They are at nine, what, twelve, twelve, you want to say twelve, at work?
Yeah, I want to say eighteen.
Uh, the Monday is seventeen.
What time?
Twelve o'clock.
And are you going to try to talk to him privately, or how are you going to?
Yeah.
Okay. What do you think for me?
Oh, seems to roll, take care of it, we're fixed up. I told people it was my fault, I didn't take care of some things.
It'll get, it gets rough, then we get mixed, it gets better. There'll be a month where the complaints are high, but then we get mixed again.
Well, I went over the bridge there, you know, I'm there, still want to drive, see what we fill in the gap.
Yeah, hang on, sorry, Tammy, right there, if you would, in my mailbox, there's a handwritten paper there. Do you see that? Stuck together, two pages, is it there? As long as it's to the right, I'm sorry, I'll leave it to your right. I said, Tammy, run it to the right, see that?
If you would.
At the end of Robert's mailbox.
Yeah. I, I just want to, again, I guess, I appreciate what Jill has done, but I think this speaks volumes. Over the last five years, this county has blacked out, we've repaid over the last five years, a hundred, almost a hundred and thirty miles of roads. Now, realizing that this county has three hundred and thirty-six miles in it? Three what?
Eleven.
Three eleven, excuse me, it shrunk, three eleven, that's over one-third of this county has new blacktop, has new asphalt. And in that timeframe, again, we have received, not up yet, what, four million? I think it's on the front here. Yeah, there's eight hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollar grant, a nine hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollar grant, a four hundred and sixty-two thousand dollar grant, and a one million dollar grant that's made this possible. We also blacktopped two, set almost eight miles of road to the LIT pass, right? We've also got seven miles, was it seven miles of road to the PIF. So again, we're well, we're over a hundred and thirty miles. We had four community crossing grants, one railroad grant, two IPAP safety grants. We've also replaced four bridges, and that's not, again, that's not culverts, that is bridges. And all this is, and we have one in process now being replaced in bridges. So again, when people look at this community, and I, I'm going to be very upfront and honest here, I don't know of any other county, especially down in this area, that has received what we have received and done what we have done. And as Jerry is of his department, I'm very proud of what the board of commissioners and the county highway has done in this community. We've, and going back to what you said, we have put, been able to help put SRO officers in every school. We have, I think, been good stewards of what we've been in charge of, and I certainly appreciate the effort that Jill has done and been able to receive these grants. And again, we've talked about this before, she has been a tremendous saving. If we paid out, like other counties did, that's about forty, I think about four or five thousand dollars a year for them to fill out the grant applications, and she certainly didn't receive that, so.
She needs to raise.
I mean, I just want people to know what's going on.
And I'd like to throw in too, the county council, the county board, help us too.
Yeah, I'm not going to say-
I mean, they put a ton of money into, which generally is not, like it's not their, all too-
Again, if Mike Zollman was here, he would make sure this is said, so again, they did not put in taxpayer dollars, they put in hospital revenue.
Exactly. And when you look at-
They didn't have to.
They understand, they understand, we have to use your kind of-
I mean, and that's just, and that, and this is, you know, this is certainly not smoking mirrors, this is facts. Facts, and the fact is, is you're exactly right, this was all done without taxpayer dollars, because it's hospital dollars that come into this and made this happen. So again, we appreciate each and every one. And we also, again, I left this out here, and we have purchased, we have upgraded our numerous times our equipment. I know when I come on, the trucks was beginning to fall apart. We have purchased three new Western Star dump trucks, twenty-twenty's freight lighters, two, three of them fifteens, you know, new mower tractors, new roller, things that we've, and it's allowed us to do more. So again, and I personally thank the council for a lot part in this, because they have, they have put a lot of money towards this and helped us, but it's been monies that, again, that's been coming from the hospital, and we certainly appreciate people that have been helping. So I want to make that note, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, next thing up is, uh, I had to add a thought here. The, yeah, the Dietrich appraisals, was paid bills on them, again, yes, I thought it was, uh, there is, there's two appraisals that was done on the Dick, uh, building over here. One of Dickerson and I think Rovani was the other one there, claims approval, we just need to approve the total cost for both of those three thousand dollars to appraise that building. The council, council had already agreed to do that, so do I hear a motion to pay these bills?
Yeah, I'm in.
Second?
I'll second.
You unanimous? And I'll do the second. Do we need to sign these off, or do you have one? The red one, okay. I'm just going to sign below you here, about here, bud. There's two of them. Okay.
Well, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Sorry, I forgot to ask you, when I was up there. What do you want us to do with the cooling tires and all the stuff that's over in the jail, because we got the new heating and air system? There's that outside cooling tire, and there's that water boiler, you know what I'm saying, that's inside, all that stuff, see, it used to be on that way, so. Do you have any ideas? We've contacted the county, and they said that it wasn't worth anything, they said, new, when people buy, they buy new stuff, you see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
What do you want to do with it, guys?
I, I, you know, we can do, I think, one or two waves on something like that. I think if you did, I don't know if anybody would be interested to do the option on doing something like that, or if you were going to just take bids on whether it's going to be scrap, I don't know that. It might be just, well, often, just to take bids, seal bids on, for scrap, if it's, if it's not going to be anything.
You tell me what you want me to do, and I'll do it, it's no big deal.
What you guys, it's on the, this boiler and the cooling tower outside, Jack, and again, it's very, they are very outdated. I'm sure there's nobody going to be interested in purchasing, I think they'll probably be scrapped, that's what they're going to do.
They can call it off for one deal, they just write a check to the sheriff's department, is what they do.
Okay.
You know, we, we just, we'll have to test, might tear it down too, because it'd have to have some cutting torches and, because all of that stuff, you know what I'm saying, is welded in and all that, so. That's why I said, I don't know what to, you know, if, if we could make it a sealed bid and just say that they're responsible for the complete removal of everything there.
Yeah, I think that would be, that may be the best thing to do right there, to say, you know what, let them come in and remove it, uh, and how-
That makes sense.
Yeah, just let them come in and remove it and, uh- we'll have, and you look at and decide.
And let me ask you a question. Do you want, uh, is that something Tammy would need to put in the newspaper, or something, or?
Probably would, yeah, I think we would probably have to advertise on that, to take, uh, take a sealed bid for the removal, uh, of this tower, and, and what they.
I'd say this, the heating and air conditioning system in the old, the old jail. Because I'm not sure what all of, I don't know, I, I call it a boiler, but I don't know what the team called it.
Yeah. Yeah.
I don't know what the specific language would be.
Yeah.
Just get with me.
Yeah.
Come up with it.
Okay.
Well, I'd like to off-topic real quick, similar to this. Uh, let you guys just maul around. I, uh, I took the extension office out yesterday, and had a tour of the old health department, see what they thought. And, uh, I appreciate you guys, just talk to them too, get some thoughts on it. Good or bad, but you can, you can discuss it with them, if it's a possible, possible move.
That's it.
That's it.
All right. Okay. Again, now we're up to that twenty-twenty auction preparation here. Uh, Jill submitted a list of some things here that she would like to get rid of, and I know the sheriff has some things that you would like to get rid of. Uh, I guess we need a, a date, uh, on when we would do that. How you wanna do it? I mean, I, I mean, I, I would do it, I would volunteer to do it, I would say that, uh, at no expense. Uh, everything it would make would be going back in. I would suggest that if we're gonna do this, I, I think say this to the sheriff the other day, that we may contact, uh, Mayor Hopkins and, and Mayor Amyk, and if they have anything, and, uh, we can have just a government surplus sale, we can put it all in there. If you have anything that you need to get rid of, or wanna get rid of, I mean, we can certainly keep it separated.
Or do you split the money at the end?
Well, you, whatever, there, whatever, the, whatever the city brought, they would, whichever city it was, they'd get, there's no problem about that. Uh, we can keep that separated, nothing, and, uh, you know, uh, so anyway, uh, how, how, I, how quick, uh, are you looking, wanting to do this? I mean, how quick can people be ready?
I'm ready.
Well, that's.
All we gotta do is move it, we're bringing it in.
Yeah, we've got stuff out there that the health department need to be gone. Uh, okay. It's probably gonna be April. And then March, I think March, um, pretty much full, but probably April, uh, what we got, April, thanks.
Spencer, do you wanna tell us when you're available?
He gets to do it.
Yeah.
You better ask the boss.
Yeah.
Point. Surely, when can you do that?
Wouldn't we allow Bob to do that?
Uh, I don't know.
He's not listening.
What about, uh?
He blew my birthday ball, and I'm like, this is April, man.
Oh, I did do that. I did do that, just.
My too. Or buy another box of chocolates. Be loved, flowers and candy, Bob.
How about, uh, I don't know, maybe eighteenth, is that a good thing, though? April eighteenth?
There you go.
What?
Where are you wanting to host it?
Uh, well, I would think, probably out there at the health department, like we did before, wouldn't you? I think that was, they gave us plenty of room, plenty of place in the park out there, and, uh, I think it worked out pretty good out there.
Yeah, it worked out good out there.
Uh, eighteenth of April, is that something you'd dare, bud?
You don't have a meeting three days prior to that, so it's not, it's not.
You believe me?
Yeah. I'll, I'll, yes, sir?
What kind of list do you need inventory-wise to, because I've got a lot that's gonna go out there.
Uh, you know.
I know, I think last auction, I had a whole bag or two, and it didn't really do.
Yeah.
Nothing at all, kinda.
Yeah. I think, well, I mean, if, if, you know, again, what, what you're gonna have is probably going along with what computer stuffs and stuff like that.
So, computers monitor wires.
And, and, you know, it's a, uh, I think, good working order, when you get over that, if they are working computers, and, uh, and what time, and all that kind of stuff.
Okay.
That was, you know, I mean, it's very hard to, uh, to sell anything to anybody that they don't know what it's gonna work or not.
Most, most of everything is down in that basement, it's kinda not good, not in shape. Plus, the hard drives and RAM, everything's ripped out of them, so they're, they're quite a none, long comes through.
Okay.
You can refurbish it, maybe, there might be that, but.
Okay.
They're kinda like the cooling tire. They're just sitting there, not worth anything.
So, Tammy, you're willing to answer?
Help a black eighteenth, sound a lot to you guys?
Sure.
And here comes one more walking through the door now. I don't know, I don't know what, hello, there, Casey. Uh, we just booked you for the eighteenth of April, so.
Right, you tell her.
We'll do that. All right, that'll be the plan on that. If it changes, we'll let you know, but we'll, right now, tenable to agree on that. Uh, next thing is up is the, oh, Martin.
Time. Not this time, no.
Ten o'clock.
Ten o'clock.
Yeah, ten o'clock. The, uh, consideration of the minutes, December thirtieth, twenty nineteen, has everybody had a chance to look at it? Do you hear a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion made. Second.
Okay. I'll make it, you're not gonna look. You got three copies here of this thing?
Yeah, I think I have some.
If you want them, you just need one signed, though, right?
I'll give you the book later.
Okay. Next up is the, uh, payroll docket. Uh, and that's here, uh, gravitation for state board accounts here, so, uh, right here, a motion to rev, uh.
Motion.
Second.
I'll second.
And, uh, we got the January claims here.
And that's just the remainder, because you guys kinda did three over the last six weeks, so that's just the balance of January claims.
Uh, I hear a motion to approve the final claims, or.
Motion.
Second.
Second. We got some old head fans or something in here.
And, uh, next thing, I'm on my way, but, do a guess on my way. Motion to put a guess on my ways.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
There you go, there. All right, uh, next up, uh, is the building inspector position, and the River Hills EDC appointments, so, uh, we do the building inspector position, has everybody made a decision, or thought on this?
So, I guess, I guess where I'm at is, are we officially? Do we officially know that, I mean, I know, I got a phone call, I'm sure you guys all got a phone call, that, about Josh, but, I mean, are we talking about tonight, that, making it official, that he didn't accept the job, or he, or what do you, what do we do?
Yes.
Because I didn't, I didn't know we were revoting again, so.
Well, my understa- my understa- and, and again, we, I guess we're absolutely happy, but, uh, it is official, but, uh, the job was offered, uh, to Josh, and Josh has declined it, and, uh, it's, uh, at this time. So, it's, uh, at that point, uh, I think, uh, I guess we have, I guess we have two choices here. We, we can, uh, go back to the well, uh, so to speak, and, 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 uh, make a decision off the, off of the, the other interviews that we've done, or we can, uh, far, I guess, open it back up, or, uh, to retake, uh, I guess, applications, and go through the process again. I'd, I'd be, I guess, would be up to the board, uh, as far as how you wanna do that.
I don't really wanna do that, so, I wouldn't get over with it, yeah.
And, uh, if you, uh, well, I'll leave it up to you here, that, if we can, uh, if you can have, again, not knowing whether or not to get officially done that, if you want to, to act on it tonight, or you want to put this off to the next meeting, I'm okay either way. However you wanna do that.
Well, we can, we can do it tonight, I mean, I'm still in the, with the same can that I, I made a motion last time, so, if you wanna do that, I'll make a motion to, to accept, uh, Mike Dickerson as the building inspector, so. Put that, we have a motion, if that's what you wanna do.
We have a, a motion, uh, for Mike, for Mike Dickerson for the job. Do we have any other motions?
Motions, or you want seconds?
Uh, I can, either way, either way.
I'll make a motion for Ben Petty for that job.
Okay. We have a motion for Ben Petty, from John, uh, for the position. So, at this point, I will ask for a motion for Mike, uh, for the position, and, uh, I can see where this is going. I can see where this is going here. No motions, uh, for a second at this point, and, uh, I'll ask for a motion for Ben Petty for the job. Right at the moment, uh, it just comes down to, I'm gonna, I feel like I'm gonna have to decide this. And, um, both of the, the people, I think, uh, are highly qualified. I did look over the applications again, and, uh, it's, uh, it's a harsh, it, it, it's a hard decision. I'll say that, I think both of them are putting in, it's a hard decision to have to make. They're both good people, uh, but if I go just off the experience, uh, I think I've got to go with Mr. Petty for the position, as far as being a, the most qualified for a position to outlast your applicants. Uh, so, with that being said, I was second to Ben Petty on that. And, uh, again, I will ask, uh, so I have a motion and a second, uh, we'll ask for a show of hands on that, uh, that's for Ben Petty. And we'll oppose to Ben Petty. We have one, so it's two, one, bro, okay. And, uh, we, uh, now have River Hills EDC board appointments, we have two of them. Uh, one, my understanding, needs to be a commissioner, is that correct? Uh, and then, we have, we've had one vacancy, is that correct?
Raymond Jones, uh, given his personal schedule and his, depending what time he's got, um, to be available to the EMS oversight and his county duties, and that's a, a distance to travel as well, to Jefferson go for the meetings. He's declined, uh, his appointment, I spoke with him earlier today, and, um, so, you need to replace Raymond. Um, and then also, you've been working in one member short, as an actual board member. You have Gene Robbins and, um, Steve Meyer as your other two appointments, River Hills, but according to their, um, regulations, commissioners from Scott County get four, one member and three at large. So, you've got two at larges right now, and one member and one at large.
So, uh, let me ask, uh, this will be the easy one, I hope, uh, either. Represent the board commissioners on that? I have.
Who's on it now?
We don't have.
We don't have.
We, we spoke to him, we need one to do that. Uh, I think maybe Gene did before, didn't she?
She may have been.
I think she was the one, yeah, and I think I probably got.
Kelly was.
Kelly was, and I, that's what she took over there, but, uh, again, uh, either one of you, uh, wanna, wanna do that, I'll, I'm okay with that.
Mike wants one of you guys, fine, no, I'll do it. But I'm okay either way with that, you want to.
You can do it.
I'm sorry.
You can do it.
Okay.
John, and, uh, I find that two jobs are commitment important, and do you, did anybody have anybody, uh, I guess in mind? Uh, again, this is new to us today, anybody that jumped to mind at all, any of you, that I can thank?
I'll, I'll turn to who we have now.
Okay. Let's try by the next lady, nobody can be trying to thank on somebody that, uh, that we are going to appoint to you. And, uh, have, have a name if you.
And then I, I wanna make, if you don't mind, an announcement, too, you may have to look at this board appointment sheet another time, because my chief deputy trooper in Arsdale has, uh, informed me that she's going to go watch her mayor, Amyk. And so her departure will be probably the next month or so, and she and I have been safety officers for many years, and she, so we may be looking at her, her being replaced. And I am gonna try to have a little something for her, um, closer to the time that she leaves, no, it's a reception kind of thing, or whatever.
Okay. Hey, Bob, just real quick back to River Hills, did, did you all officially reappoint Steve? And the reason I say that is we have to do the slating of our, of the, the most slated officers as a board, and he serves currently as the secretary. So, I, I, if, if we're reappointing him, that, that makes a difference there, to, to put that slate forward before the meeting.
They did reappoint him at the last meeting, in January.
Okay, so, okay, I just wanted to make sure, so we can.
What's your credentials?
Yeah, that was done. That was done January fifteenth.
Okay. I just wanted to know, check.
Okay. All right. Oh, one other thing here, uh, and we've already, already, uh, done this, but I've got to find it. Okay. Uh, this is the contract for, uh, enforcement of attorney, county attorney. We did, uh, already do this, we just didn't have the contract, so we didn't even sign this tonight, and, so. Again, uh, we'll, again, make it a, it's already been accepted, but just to make sure, uh, we can go through it one more time, how about a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Anything on your behalf, I'll do?
We need to agree with him on when he starts.
Uh, yeah. Yeah, I would think.
Or whatever.
I would go. I'm, I'm good with the, I'm good with. I'm good with one of it. I mean, but, uh, you know, I think, well, this is when the, I. I mean, but, uh, you know, I think, well, this is Wendy, I would think, if, uh.
I think both sides agree, we should couple weeks.
Yeah, I think so too, yeah, I think so too, so, say two weeks. Two weeks from, two weeks from.
You start payroll.
Yeah, yeah, on that payroll schedule, maybe.
I think that, eh?
I have to book the schedule.
Okay, so whatever, you'll let her put it together.
Makes it easy, yeah, okay. Okay.
You do have a meeting schedule, I did update by the five o'clock. It's at the very bottom of your packet for your meetings for this year.
Which, uh, yeah, the first and third ones, they'll be each one, I'll put them there at five o'clock. And, uh, we've had, uh, looked down through there, if there's anything that, uh, you have conflicts with, we can certainly try to rearrange or move or whatever.
And I checked against our county holiday schedule. We're good on those days, we don't have to move anything. But if there's a conflict, let me know, heading up, we can schedule something.
Okay. All right. Anything on behalf, anyone?
Yeah. Like, I just mentioned the, I'll mention it again, the health department, just to talk to the people down there, see what they want.
I didn't feel, maybe I did. Yeah, I did get a call from them through, on the, uh, with that being said, I want to make a motion, uh, adjourned.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
We are out of here.